Are you?
I'm sorry.
Are you getting any raindrops, did you do that?
Just a little, not much. Not much.
Call me in the door.
Sim.
Here.
Mears.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Vencon, I am present.
Okay, well, stand for close.
Collection of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every religion and justice for all.
Okay, at this point in time, we're gonna just observe a moment of silence for all the happenings that we've had going on. We wanna think about all the people that have died or been injured or, you know, suffered in some way over these casualty events through the violences that have took place. So at this time, we'll spend more of the silence. Okay, I guess then we'll start in with our representatives that are here from Rumpke. Address some things.
I'm Sean Cobb, I'm the residential manager.
I'm Shonda Rora, I'm the new, you know, store rep.
Okay. I guess. I look at Rhonda, I look, as of today, we've had some complaints. And our police officer actually said also that he had, we kinda had a bad issue with cans on the roadways today. And are awful near the roadways, and then when the wind picked up, they were on the roadways. And it was kind of a bad situation because it started raining pretty hard. It wasn't good. I don't, that seems to be a periodic issue, I don't know why.
Along with miss trash issues. Can I just ask, what on Rumpke's? What are you doing, what are you trying to work on, work with the drivers? Can I take it from there?
Yes, so, we had the driver out here that was really causing a lot of issues. He's not with the company no more. We're training another driver. He ended up getting hurt two weeks after we put him out here. So I've had different people out here, and I'm hoping by next week, I'll have him back out here. He didn't, when I had him out here, he was doing well, like, didn't have issues, so I wanna get back to that. I know the cart placement, I dealt with that with the last guy. That's something that I'll address again because out here, the wind blows, it's gonna end up in the, I get it.
That's the problem, yeah. I mean, they just, you know, I know they can't predict what day's gonna turn out to be windy, but they just need to be a little bit farther back off the, I agree. It always seems to be the trash, and I don't, don't seem to have a problem with the recycling.
Good, excellent.
Yeah, an issue?
Yeah, our street was completely skipped two weeks ago. It was on the calendar that it was our recycling day, but they never took anything from anyone on Air Hill. And so, our recycling dumpsters were overfilled when we put them out this past Monday. I personally, every time I put out, like, an extra trash can when our recycling gets skipped, because this wasn't the first time, I have to put out a second trash can with my recycling, and they just take the entire trash can. They took my two Dayton Dragons trash cans that I got from the Dragons game, the recycling logo on it a couple of weeks back, and I'm not happy about that. But every time I put out an additional bin with my recycling, because there's too much to fit in the one with the black lid, they just take the entire trash can.
Okay, when, when something like that happens, can you let them know here so they can let us know?
I did.
You did?
I told Rhonda knows about my Dragons one.
Is that how you prefer people to do it, would be to call Rhonda, or would you, if, I mean, if they say it's some mess, or would you rather us, them call you directly?
Uh, I'd, yeah.
Either or?
It'd be quicker, it's use of emails, and I get the email, so if I'm out on the road or something, I'll get it. But yeah, I'll look into why that happened as well, because I didn't know that.
I do not have a recycled bin I'd like to get.
There's one outside here, I'll get the tag number off of it, report it to Rumpke, and you can take one of these out.
Oh.
West of the building. Okay. Yeah, I don't know which direction to go, this has been several months, residents are unhappy, postings on Facebook. So I guess, if we could get the word out, I know some residents will call Rumpke. I had a particular resident call me yesterday, the trash was missed last Tuesday, they called Rumpke on Wednesday, they said they'd get it picked up as soon as possible. Friday came, the trash was still not picked up. They called Rumpke again, we'll get it picked up, they called Perry Township on Monday. So then I emailed, I believe, both of you, and I also was in contact with Faith, the recycling driver. And Faith is the one that actually did pick it up. Today, when I passed the resident's home, I noticed it was stickered, so I just pulled into her drive. I text the lady, I said, "I'm out here, I'm just looking at things." It did have a sticker saying it had to be closer to the road, and in our contract, it says ten feet. And even, she told me, if she'd put it right there where they're wanting it, she cannot get in and out of her driveway, she lives on Johnson-Crocco Road. So she, and it's, and even where she has been putting it, it is within the ten feet. So I'm, I'm thinking there needs to be some sort of, with whichever driver we can get, a consistent driver. And we need to review, they need to review this. Because I've been pulling several of it.
Well, when you mentioned driveway, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's been a complaint we've had, too, that they're put back in the middle of the driveway sometimes, and people cannot turn in their driveway, and they don't like that. You know, oncoming traffic and stuff. And out here, to stop, you get out, I get it. Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I, I don't know, I guess that's something the drivers need to just be instructed, they need to keep the cans away from the edges of the road and not in the middle of the driveways, I mean, I, I don't know. That's, that's two of the issues we certainly hear, I mean.
Did you bring a route map?
Yes, I got one.
Okay. So collection times does not start before 6:00 AM, is that correct?
Yes, it should, like that.
Okay, so even if people do put it out?
Are you experiencing something different?
No, I just want to, I wanna post something on Facebook, and I just want everything to be accurate. So if somebody puts their trash and recycling out at 5:45.
She didn't say I'll have to call.
Yeah, six o'clock.
It should be okay.
The contract states six o'clock, that's the time we pick it up.
Okay. The recycling lady is the only one that'll come into the office after her route to check to see if there's any missed calls. Trash drivers do not.
They used to.
They used to?
They used to, pretty, pretty consistently.
The last few years, they have not.
Yeah, it's been a while.
We can get back to that as well, it's not, it's not an issue.
Well, it's kind of a good thing if something got called in, that way they knew about it right away, we can take care of it. Kinda help coordinate it all and so forth.
And another thing that I'm gonna start doing, because we haven't been doing it, but I'm thinking this will maybe help our situation, I would think. Missed collections. The resident needs to call Rumpke or us. In our contract, it says it needs to be picked up within 24 hours. If not, they will have a billing adjustment, and I'm gonna start enforcing that.
Yeah.
Because that's some of the stuff that's on Facebook, you know, why, why, why am I paying the service if they're not picking me up in the trash?
Right. I guess I'll ask it in reverse, do you have any problems with our people out here that we need to be addressing, that they need to do differently?
Um, not, I mean, not that something stands out or anything, usually it's something the driver can correct.
Yeah, and I, I understand sometimes there's, I guess, objects put in, cans, that it's like, no, no. You, you know, and they tag.
Yeah.
And yeah, we have that system, so I tell them to use it.
And that's, that's fine.
Good job.
Anything else, I mean, we just, and I know we're not the only entity with issues, I know several other cities and villages and townships have issues as well.
Yeah, and, I mean, I think Sean, you know, speaking to this too, we were challenged with the tornadoes. So, you know, people were spread pretty thin during that period of time, but now we're, you know, back up, and now that the dust has settled, and...
And you all had a big turnover too, didn't you?
Yes. Yeah, we went through that, we're out of that, kind of, where we were at.
Yeah.
Okay. I do have one question. So, twice when my personal collection bins have been taken by recyclers, I called Rumpke, and I've spoken to the lady, and the answer is if they're not sanctioned collection bins from Rumpke, they will take them because they're not our bins. Okay, so my question is, what is sanctioned, what can I, if, if my recycling bin is overflowing, like, when we had the tornado, we didn't have water, we had tons of empty plastic bottles that I wanted to recycle. That's when my Dragon ones got taken, but what can I put them out in that is sanctioned?
Would be sufficient, if that's what you have, or...
You can use another can, we shouldn't be taking your cans regardless.
Well, it's happened twice.
Yeah.
And when I called the second time, like, they said if it's not sanctioned, if it's not the big green one with the black lid, they will take it because it's not an authorized receptacle. And then also, tomorrow, I have 7-2, Air Hill Road.
Do those cans need to be marked, if it's not your regular can that they are recycling, because, so the drivers know, I mean, I don't know how they would know otherwise.
That would be best, because it knocks them up in the back of the car.
Okay, well, I don't, yeah, I'm not saying I didn't know, but it seems like they wouldn't know whether it was trash or recyclables unless it's wrote on there, or, you know, I don't know. And I didn't know what your requirements were on that, so...
Each place is different, I mean, out in the country, I, I live out in the country, so I know, and I don't want people to have to put it on two separate areas, like the one you were talking about. With the, being placed in the road and all that, so... But we'll get your address and look into that, and see, if we gotta replace your cans, we will.
Well, if I get another one of the Dragons ones, because I brought them home for the game. I think I can work on that, so...
Just had a quick question for the township. At what point, how many incidents does it take to review the contract and say that they're in breach of contract for subpar performance, not delivering on what's been agreed to, and stuff along those lines?
Well...
Where we're at, or...
I don't know, I mean, that, that's came about, that question, and I don't know, I guess we could cancel, but then what do we do? You know?
Well, everybody, let's start at the beginning, we're with, we're through the WRCG, so it's just not Perry standalone.
Right.
It's Perry, Germantown, Jacksonville, Jackson, and the village of Farmersville. So we're, we're together, so it's not just Perry only that can make the changes. The last time we went up to bid, Rumpke was the only one that...
Only did.
Only bid.
So, you know, we lose Rumpke, then what do we do? We have no trash service, that's, that's a real big problem.
And it sounds like a lot of the time, we don't have trash service. So I'm just trying to understand, by the context of the contract, how performance is measured and evaluated for either continuing with the work or putting it back on the street.
I think we have trash service, there might be a few get missed here or there, but overall, we have trash service.
And I think it's excellent, too.
Yeah, overall, yeah.
They do a good job.
Yeah, but overall, they do, I will say.
Everything has its glitches, and, yeah.
Oh, I, I agree with that, I'm just saying that it, it's not becoming less complaints, it's becoming more complaints. And people are talking about, I don't care if it's on Facebook, if it's at the IGA or wherever else, it's, it's a swelling issue. So I'm just trying to gauge, what, where do you go from here? They've come in, they've been gracious enough to come in and answer questions, that's great, but if you're not measuring performance, and it continues to happen, I'm asking about the process.
So what would you suggest that they're the only ones that, that, that have answered, that have come up and said, "We're, we're the only ones, that we're the only ones that's gonna bid on yours." What do we do with the trash? What's your suggestion?
Exactly.
I'm asking you, what would you do, that's what I'm asking.
If I was in charge of any contract, I don't care if it's picking up trash or whatever else.
Okay.
You evaluate performance, and that goes into your negotiations.
Right.
If they're not performing, and they're the only ones doing it.
Right.
Is there clauses for renegotiation based on subpar performance? You would think that there was. I'm not saying recompete it completely on the street, but I'm saying that if you're getting subpar performance, for what you're paying for.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what we're doing right now. We get brought just to the attention of representatives from...
These people are gracious enough to come in, and they're offering to give you a, a free trash can that they have obviously mistaken. They're obviously going to take money off a bill that you owe, so I think that they're willing to work with us. And I guess, you know, I understand what you're saying about a contract, yeah, if you don't like the contract, but my point is, no one else bid it. What are we going to do with the trash out here?
And this, me and Rhonda, we met with, before, with Farmersville, and Germ, or Jacksonville Township, and I think German was there, well, I know you were there. I don't recall if you were or not, but, yeah, and, so we, we've all talked about this, and trying to, trying to make, I mean, it, it's a, it's a business situation where you have turnover of employees, and you just don't always, I, I get it. You don't always have the employees do the way you would like, you know, and it's like, and, I don't know.
We're trying to iron out the problem, that's why we have represented for Rumpke here today.
I'm just asking, because I know Rhonda had mentioned people contacting her or Rumpke. Well, they contact Rumpke, how does she know that there was an issue? That's an example, right?
She talks back and forth to Rumpke a lot.
Understand.
And provide a report for that as well.
Right. So, that's what I'm getting to, I'm not trying to sit here and stomp on anything, I'm asking a question about how you evaluate performance of a service that we're paying for.
Right.
And what happens if it dips below a certain point that is unaccept, deemed unacceptable, either by the township or whoever, and what the next steps are, so...
And I think that would require all four entities of the WRCG to come together and make that decision.
And that would make sense, that's why I was asking.
And I don't think we've ever been anywhere near that point, to think that they haven't fulfilled, I mean, yeah, there's been some missed, and there's been some issues, but I don't think we've ever been to the point of...
And I think some things that I've read, the reason why, or one of the reasons why this was created, not just because it was super cleanup fun, but also, if I have Rumpke, and Trustee Mears has Dempsey, and Trustee Sims has XYZ Company. We have those trucks constantly on our township roads, which need repair. And remember, we have never placed a road levy on the ballot.
And I think at one point in time, we had five, five trash companies in this township, picking up trash, and that's why that kinda company...
I just got one more question, just for the sake of understanding. So, we currently have the contract with Rumpke, we had an issue, Rumpke's here, we're gonna work together to resolve that issue. If a resident is unhappy with that issue, whatever it may be, or the resolution, are trash collections not mandatory that we participate, right?
Yes, it is mandatory.
So if a resident says they don't wanna be a part of it, and they don't come down here to pay for their trash bill, they can't just take it to the dump themselves, or when it, oh, we still have it?
That's mandated by law.
That's...
592, back in 1990, approximately mandated that, every jurisdiction had to have a trash plan.
Yeah, but, this case doesn't have to participate in that plan.
But that was our trash plan.
That's your order.
To have, everybody had trash service.
What's a trash district?
A trash district.
What was created?
And that was created, and that was the way we had our trash plan.
Okay, so we are contractually obligated as a resident to be a part of that.
We have to have a trash service, yes. That was, that was way back in the days of landfill, and we were all so happy to avoid that and get rid of that issue, that we were tickled to death to go with 592 and, and create this trash district, so, yeah.
I hate to do this, but I've had really good service, thank you very much. And Jim?
I have to, it's been missed once, I'm sure so, but it's...
Yeah, these are, these are little incidents that have happened, it's not like it's a blanket thing across the township, so, I'm tickled to death with the service.
And I think...
My can was a little close to the roof, it was different.
I'll address that in more.
Usually if you guys miss on Tuesday, usually on Wednesday, you make a run through the township.
You are best.
I've been missed a couple times, and I never called Rhonda. Hey, wait till next week. I rock the boat, I mean...
I would rather if you missed, so you got this.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, I used to work for a company, we used to take care of the trucks, I know what the drivers go through.
Yeah, they do.
People should go past them at ninety miles an hour, they don't care. You know, the thing, so I'm not gonna rock the boat if they missed my can one or two times, there's no sense in it. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to, to, and allow us to explain, you know, the steps that we're taking, hiring new folks, and, we just appreciate it, so we're gonna work our best to improve the communication, and Rhonda does, by the way, a great job of communicating, so we appreciate that.
And Kate, she's not here.
Kate's not here, yeah.
But, and then tomorrow night at seven o'clock, the recycling class, that will be here, so you might be recycling some items that Rumpke cannot process.
Yeah, well, that's a little refresher for us on what's, except, what's on.
Everyone's welcome to come, and, at seven o'clock.
Hey, Rhonda, will, will you post or distribute any materials that are distributed during that for people who can't make it? Like, if there's a flyer that says, "Good, bad, for the recycling..."
Yeah, we have pamphlets, yeah, I'll be right back, she'll write some flyers.
And I have flyers from the Rumpke trip, that we have out in the reception area for those residents that walk in.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, well, if we could just kinda work on some of those cans too close to the road, and drivers stopping in, and... And we don't always know every, you know, who's been missed that day, but, again, like to get out to the residents, if you can contact us, don't wait two, three days later.
Yes.
Because after Tuesday, they're just delved to Germantown, I believe.
Yeah, we just keep them in south, yeah.
So they're still close enough that they can come back and pick up your trash, but if you wait four days later, then they're a lot further away, so we like to be notified as soon as possible.
This time of year, maybe it's not so bad, but I feel sorry for the drivers in the winter time, you know, I, I, one, there was a couple times in the winter, I'm like, I don't, I'm not even gonna put it out, we can skip a week. You know, it's like, this is a horrible job, let them, let them go on down the road a little faster, you know? It's, it's a tough, yeah, out there on the back of that truck, but it's below zero.
It is, yeah.
Do we have a Rumpke number, phone number? Would you rather us call you, or call Rumpke, or both?
It doesn't matter. I'm kinda thinking it's easier to call here by the time you go through all the prompts.
Yeah. I mean, you might, you might be happier doing that, and...
And then she can email back to us. Then she can email them, so it would probably be a different one.
And that way, you've kinda got a handle and control on what's going on.
Yeah.
What number do you want me to call you on? If I...
Don't get yourself...
People find a way to get ahold of me, in multiple ways, so...
And I would say, if you get people calling in, and they're having issues with customer service, or, you know, what they're being told, and it's not right, let us know.
Yeah, please.
Because I don't, I don't know, I don't hear that stuff, and it's something, if it's wrong, we'll get it corrected as well. Because they have new people too, so it's, I can't speak for them.
Continually communicating, right, it's key, so...
And I think you were the one who saved us during the tornado, you got us a dumpster. Sonya Keaton helped us out, you got you one, yes.
Yeah, she's my neighbor.
Yes. She said, "I know the person, I'll get you a dumpster," and, thank you very much, you got that delivered that day.
We worked really hard.
Yes, you did. We appreciated that, yes.
Eight three three, three oh four one.
Yes. And don't, I need that route map.
Yeah.
Unless, and you guys are welcome to stay, or you can lay, it doesn't matter.
Well, thanks again for having us.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Let's go on Monday and Tuesday.
They handed me one, and Shonda.
I know there's problems at times, there are old projects, and they put ours. When I tried, put the front office known when we have one, there's gonna be one on Keener Road.
Oh, that's right.
End of August, September sometime, we're at Whiting Green Service. We can still probably get down, fill a final paving, but, you know, I try to inform them, but I, I know with county and stuff like that, new projects, stuff to get down, so...
Just let us know the dates, and we'll...
S-H-A-N.
We'll come up with a way to get it.
Colin. Colin. See you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
He is around.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other visitors have anything at this point in time?
Oh, I have them at the end.
Oh.
I'm sorry, unless you want to move them.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, um, the next time, uh, resolution nineteen, amend the minutes from the board trustees meeting May fourteenth. Remove where it says attached on page four after Kristen Spitznagle, name is printed.
And I have those minutes here if you need them.
And that was regarding a, uh, she had read the paper and was gonna give it, but I don't know, somehow she didn't end up retaining the paper or something and we didn't get it, so it's not there. And so it can't say, I could see it attached in the minutes, so we're gonna remove that.
One second.
A second, yeah.
Price.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes.
Mears.
Yes.
Okay, uh, except the minutes from the July ninth, two thousand nineteen, uh, meeting.
So moved.
Second. Price.
Yes.
Mears.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes. And then the payment of the bills. Check thirty-four four twenty-seven to thirty-four four ninety-seven.
So moved.
Second. Price.
Yes.
Mears.
Yes.
Sim.
Yes.
I need a resolution approving the supplemental appropriation for five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents to increase the zoning salary line and account one thousand dash one thirty dash one ninety.
So moved.
Check.
Sim.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Mears.
Yes.
Okay, the bank statement is with the checks that needs signed. Um, recycling class again is tomorrow night at seven P M. For anybody that would like to attend. Uh, representative from Rumkey will be present to discuss the recycling process and, and items accepted. John Manier from Solid Waste will be, was going to be here for a brief, um, description on composting. Um, John Manier will not be present. Something else just came up. We'll still talk about it. We can find, I can find, find enough information to, um, talk about that. Um, the MCTA dates, I attended the July eighteenth at Washington Township. Uh, some of the townships discussed the countywide lodging tax to help the Dayton Convention Center. Of course, we don't need, will be impacted by that since we have no lodging here, no hotels or anything. But that was a very sore issue, especially with Miami Township and Butler. Uh, of course, we did talk about the tornado and the different areas that it hit. The townships did discuss that we should create a township emergency disaster plan. From what I heard from them speaking, the, the county employees were out and clearing roads, but us townships never received anything from the county administrative part till like three days later. And that's why we were thinking we should, as townships, work together and create some sort of disaster plan.
You mean they thought we didn't know about it? I mean, I wasn't that.
Cause we were out that night.
Cause we were out that night, like an hour after it happened or less.
By the time the, the county, we started receiving emails and what they were gonna do with, you know, just assistance and help. Townships came together, awesome.
Awesome, yeah.
We had townships that were not affected by the tornado that came.
Came helped.
And helped, you know, neighboring townships.
Absolutely.
County, county employees were out and about, but anything from the county for say as guidelines of procedures to do, it was several days after. And that's what the townships are discussing that, how well we all work together.
Yeah, well.
So basically how we're gonna work, how we need to work with the county.
So next time, if you're planning for a tornado, maybe the next time it'd be an earthquake, it will be the same thing anyway.
Right.
You know, it's hard to, it's always hard to put together stuff like that. I mean, you know, what, you sometimes just gotta go with whatever you got and deal with.
But this was more on the administrative level that they didn't reach out to us. A lot of the townships don't feel soon enough. On guidelines of assistance on procedures and everything like that. So.
Yeah, when I spoke to Montgomery County's Emergency Management Office, uh, when we were doing the thing at Perry B, I was talking to them about a couple of different things. They did not have Perry Township on their response list at all. And they did not know that we had damaged properties.
They did not know what?
That we had damaged properties.
Oh, oh, yes.
And this was Montgomery County's EMA person answering the phone. She said, oh, did you guys have damage? And I said, I said, um, you are Montgomery County, right? And I actually said to this woman, you're kidding, right?
I don't know, some, there was a cross up there, cause they were informed long before Perry B ever was set up.
Well, but it wasn't about Perry B in general. It was about, but it was, it was a whole different thing.
But.
Cause like three days after that, I was at a FEMA meeting downtown. So they, they, they had us on the thing. They were emailing us.
We were in Brookville at one, like a couple of days after. So that's a, I don't know where that, that person was out of the loop.
The only thing that I.
Well, that's my concern is there were a lot of people out of the loop with that. And I'm wondering where, what we need to do or find out from them where their loop got broken.
They did have us on, I know that as a fact because Ron and I were down there. They had us, they had us emailed and it was Brookville, everybody, Harrison Township, all that.
You guys were down there. I was not down, I was.
And Tuesday morning, I was on the phone with the county, uh, in several entities within the county and so they knew about that. I don't know who you were talking to, but somebody was out of the loop. Somebody.
Claire.
Yeah, we, we were, we were there, cause they, they were calling us right away.
Cause they knew Brookville, but Perry Township as a township on its own.
Well, they addressed us as Perry Township and they did say, you don't have much damage. And we said, yes, we have damage, but.
We didn't even talk to them about damage right away.
That's where we need to find out where their loop got broken to where they included our numbers in with like Brookville itself, but they included it as an entire four, five, three oh nine zip code. But not everybody in Perry Township has a four, five, three oh nine zip code.
No.
That's just the one end of it and I think that's important to ask them.
I don't know what they could have did additionally anyway.
Well, Dale and I were in conference and with, uh, Chief Jerome and several of the officers up there the following day, well, even that night.
Yeah.
And so I, I, somebody got lost in this lawsuit.
Yeah, no, internally on our part, I think you guys did well. I think our township did well. Our residents did well. In our bubble, I think everything was good on our level, but when it got outside to the county level, there were some things that just went off into nowhere and then people forgot.
Well, that's like Terrace Park. They, they think Terrace Park is Brookville. Well, it is, but it's also Perry Township. So that's a big, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. See now we got, hey.
I read in the paper that we're under two weeks for reporting any damage claims. And I think that's FEMA. I'm not positive that they said to cut off us within two weeks. I think.
Oh, this nineteen.
I think it's FEMA thing.
Yeah, well, we've worked with a bunch of FEMA stuff and I've met, I think we've all met, me and Mike met, we gave them a lot of figures and we spent a lot of time compiling figures and.
Yeah, we've got all the figures and the meeting that I attended down at the, the Crown Plaza. You, you have to go to their porter, portal and they're gonna sign and it.
There's different levels of FEMA.
And if you don't have that much damage, this and that. And then, you know, with Brookville, if we go in with Brookville and then do we bill Brookville or it's just, yeah, we gotta figure it all out. So, yes.
There's a lot.
Get covered.
Yes, yes.
And I actually got some information as of today about debris that was put in Wolf Creek from the tornado. And now they're talking about, you know, how to clean that out and what all to put together on doing that. And like Si just got the info. Well, yesterday and today I was following up on, I still gotta do more follow up because we gotta go to the Department of Natural Resources and.
Trees down.
Um, yeah, trees that were deposited in there. So it's a, yeah, there's a lot of different directions to it all, so.
Was that a dumping effort or was that natural?
No, natural.
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 Yeah, the natural, the tornado just spilled all the trees.
They got aerial photos or we've got aerial photos of it, so.
They happened to have some prior to the tornado. Now we have them after the tornado, so they got the difference and. But see, that's private properties, but still the Wolf Creek affects everybody. And so it's gonna have to be cleaned out, not to create damage or flooding to other people. But still you gotta obtain permission to get there. It's, it's quite a process. I mean, so, right away is, so, but it's, it's in the works, so.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry. Okay. I was just gonna, just giving an update on several of the other townships. Uh, Clay Township, fourteen forty-nine area, if any of you have been over in that direction, they're changing down to single lanes instead of the double lanes with traffic lights. Uh, over twenty-nine years, there's been twenty-two deaths in that area. We've been wanting to grade that for quite some time. Uh, Jefferson Township said only about nine percent of their residents recycle. So he was very interested in my recycling class and kind of staying in touch with me to see how that goes.
And I think we were, and maybe I think we still are, the top recycling ones in the county, this township.
Well, in WRCG, Perry is the.
Well, in, in the, yeah, in WRCG, yeah, that's correct.
We are. Um, and then also all the trash, Montgomery County is taken to the transfer station and hauled to Cincinnati. I've had so many people say, you know, I only generate one bag of trash about every other week and I have a cheaper charge, um, just everything's been thrown out at me. And, you know, everybody's, whether you're a senior citizen, um, a single person, a family, everybody's gonna have to get charged the same because Rumkey is out here. They are running the roads, so. And the hauling the trash to Cincinnati, um, is an expense. So there's no more stony hollow dumping at all. The next MCTA meeting is at Jefferson and Jackson Township. They're gonna share, which will be September nineteenth. Uh, all the holdings have been paid for the month of July. Uh, the freeze plug for the vehicle on the warranty, I guess if you stick with it, it'll pay off. And so we will be getting, uh, a hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. The total bill was two hundred and ten dollars and forty-eight cents. Not sure how I did that. There was a ton of phone calls for that. Um, I've also created a gov deals account for the road department and the administration. So the old lights and the phones are listed on there. Apparently there's a, nobody's bid on them. But I think for audit purposes, we have to go through this procedure. If nobody bids on them, then we can.
Dispose of.
Dispose of them. Uh, the DPL rebate paperwork for the new lights for the administration and the maintenance has been, um, completed with the W nine. After completion of all lighting, which I don't think we, there's two more, I believe.
Three.
Three, okay. Um, once they are installed, then I can finish the paperwork on township letterhead with the cost of the labor to be emailed. I attended the Ohio State Fair August first and helped the Ohio Township Association. And I passed out awards to the kids and their dogs. That was the funnest of that ever. So. Uh, also the Speedway from August first to November thirtieth, if you go over the five hundred and eighty gallons, uh, we will get an additional fifteen cents per gallon rebate. That pertains to the road and the, the police. And the new copier, it's been placed on the O-Tarma Insurance, this'll waive the damage, the property damage surcharge of thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents per month. And then I also have in here a trustee's report, which I think we hit some of it. I was putting updates on FEMA paperwork, but we discussed FEMA paperwork here. Uh, Ron, Johnson Brookville Road, an old Dayton house, the rumble strip. Have you talked to county?
I've been working with the county on that. And what we have there now is an eight inch light, flashing light. Uh, I negotiated to get a twelve inch LED light, which is about seven times brighter than what's there. And it's a twelve inch rather than eight inch. So the flashing lights won't be changed. The rumble strips, they are not gonna do that because it causes so much noise and neighbors complain about it. I can't make any promises, but I'm working diligently to get stop ahead signs that have the flashing LED lights and they're solar powered. They're really expensive. But when I was talking to, uh, Walt, the county engineer, I said, uh, let me speak to your supervisor.
He is the supervisor.
But he gave me another lady's number and I called her and I told her about the importance of getting people aware that this was a stop, one-way stop there. And so she said she's gonna work on that. Can't make any promises, but I'd like to see LED solar powered stop ahead signs. I'll, when I know more, I'll know more. So.
So it also mentioned, did you say that they talked about a dangerous intersection sign on down?
Right, right. Yeah, something else upon my mind, a dangerous intersection sign.
And the handicap ramp on the east side of the building?
I've been working hand in hand with Kramer and Kramer. They came out, gave us a, a visual plan of what they plan on doing. I haven't talked to them recently. Um, last time I talked to them was a couple of weeks ago, but the thing is underway and, uh, it's gonna be put in. And I can't give you a date on that because they haven't given me a date on that.
Okay.
Uh, but it looks like some of the things that are, um, in the works under the grant money that we received, I know that some of it's gonna be started in September. So that's the best I can do for that.
And then the last thing was the emergency watershed protection.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mentioned about the, the logs and things.
Did you print all this off?
I've got all that, yes. I got it through my Department of Natural Resources and Soil and Water and all that. I got all that, yes. So.
Is that something that you're gonna be taking care of?
Well, I'm, I'm working, I've, I've got a contact, uh, just ran a run. Well, he's up at, uh, I've got the paper here. He said, he was with U S, USDA and RSCS up in Columbus. Yeah. So I've, I've got the information. And the emails and it went back for it. And then our local contact, here's Jeff Barnes, was I've dealt with Jeff Barnes on some other issues, on numerous things and but Jeff Barnes right now is gone on vacation, so he's not around. So Jeff will know more about it when he gets back to you, so.
This will be in the reception area in the tray. If any, you need to reference back to this and procedures that we need to do.
So, so we'll see what we can get put together on that, yeah.
Okay. Um, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, and I, and that nobody seems to know what kind of time for hang more looking at is, like progress started on it, but everybody's thinking that it'll probably be quicker than the initial log jam issue that was there anyway before, which they were looking at, which is slow, but.
Okay. And then another thing I don't have on here is guidelines for the minutes. Do trustees have any direction on, after speaking to the prosecutor, if a resident gets up and speaks and it's no action taken by the trustees, then it really does not need to go in the minutes?
Just being mentioned that they spoke, I think.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to that effect or?
Yeah, don't need it to be in resolution form, but just a motion, um.
Okay, I'll just, I'll make a motion as a resident speaks, they read it off a paper. I'll make a motion as a resident speaks, they read it off a paper or something, if it's nothing, we take action on, just mention that they spoke.
Don't have to mention the content.
Yeah, don't have to be a bunch of details about it all. Don't have to be attached to the paper.
Is there anything else you want in that? Or anything on my minutes that you're seeing now that needs to be changed? I was wondering if we needed anything else changed? Is that a no? Just mainly about the visitors when they speak?
Is there something you know?
Sim?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, that should be all of my.
All right, road and cemetery.
Our cemetery's, we're leveling graves now, not seeing anything, we grow anyway. They're a little dry. We are mowing cemeteries about every other week now. And as far as cemetery mower, we replaced the PTO switch in that mower. First things really give us problems on that. It's a two thousand and one, so, doing good. And we're working on a footer at McNelly Cemetery, so. We'll get that thing forward next week or so.
You decided to cap that like you thought? I, I come around there and you guys would laugh, so that was all right, so.
And as far as road working, working on Keener Road issue two, trees, Brookville graciously let us use their bucket truck. So it makes our work a little easier than, you know, what we gotta do down there on the trees. And I think we got a day or two left. I think we'll be done getting the trees below the line, we still gotta go back and come down the ground. And school's starting, don't wanna go around spilling any potholes on roads or anything. And crop, and crossovers before school starts and dig it through the moat, so.
I don't know if there's any bad limbs at intersections or not either.
Where Schistler used to live?
Yes.
Is there, do you, we know who bought that property?
I don't know, but county's been dealing with that intersection for years for site distance.
Because, where's Schistler?
Eric Hill in Johnsville, looking south on the east side.
The little red one?
Yeah.
Those dolls have complained several times about those pine trees, 'cause they hang out and if they're as, they're as tall as what the school leadership.
Right, I know.
'Cause he says you gotta pull them saw up. I know it's County Road, but I know. And I don't think those people live there, so.
Carl, well, I'll talk to him about it. I know they've been battling, they've been wanting to take a lot more down and I know landlord or didn't wanna touch anymore of what was there, so I'll give a call again.
The cemetery ground?
I got it right here, so it'll be in about fourteenth, so the archway. Putting for that.
Now, remember, they'll only give a thousand dollars.
Right, and that's what we're go, go after, but.
And then, Mr. Warner on Amity, did you look at that deal?
I did, I did.
You came in and you spoke to him about the tile.
I looked at Mr. Warner's and I also looked at Mr. Joe Dillon's on the schoolhouse. He had a couple concerns about that one, which we probably need to
They were legit.
Address, yeah. You, I guess you talked to him also.
Well, you're.
Yeah, so. It, it, it's got some places gully. It, it, it's just some finished stuff that needs to be done after the project. I mean, it's kinda one of them things that like, after the project's kinda done and then, you know, some additional things that kinda show up and arrives that needs to be addressed and.
Things settled and stuff like that.
I responded to Kramer's that we will not be putting in another road project until after we finish up.
Finish up some of the mows and the other.
Because we have Keener now and then next year we'll have Sheep.
I, I wanted to mention this and I forgot. In dealing with the grant money with Kramer and all these people, I have gotten a one-year extension on that, oh, by the way. So if something would happen, we can't get it all accomplished right away, we do, I did extend it for a year, so.
On, on what project?
On, that's from the, the grant on the ramp and the building and whatever.
Gotcha, gotcha. But yeah, there, some of them, like I said, and I explained, we've tried to, as these grant monies have come along, we've tried to utilize them. We wanna utilize them because we're able to do great improvements on the roads. But we're just getting some things stacked back that, just some little finish odds and ends, which take time, that need to be, you know, addressed and. It's, it's, uh, the improvements are great, but we don't want them to, after we get them improved, we don't want them to stuff the damage again because we don't, you know, there's certain things that need to be done, so. And I said, well, well, Mr. Warner was, I, I don't know, there's a, there's a tile write-up, it's very shallow and I think that's just the way of Mike knows probably, it's just the way everything lays, it has to be that way, I think, but.
Did anybody get back with Mr. Warner on that, though?
I hadn't really talked back to him, no. I, I, I can.
Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, I can. I, I, I looked at it and, and I thought maybe he was gonna be back there that day, but I don't think he was when I went back, I, I looked at it, so. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, I don't know, he, he had the idea that, and I think, you know, we've had such extreme rains this past spring, believe me, I, I know. And I think we've had water issues and things that we don't normally have, that we've had, 'cause he was thinking maybe there was more water than there before. Well, I think we just had more rains than what we've had in the past. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. I've had water in fields I never had in places before either, but, and they've stayed around, so.
I've had a couple calls this year on drainage issues, one on Little Richmond Road and near Diamond Mill, and then also on Amity after you cross off her springs. So I've been following up with those two residents.
They put tile in down there, Salt Spring, Amity?
Saw that.
Robbins?
Yes, they put tile in down there, so hopefully that'll help.
Yeah, I know, we had that one over there at, well, in the area of Collins and all that over there, we had, you know, like that, well, he had water in there one time, like he had never had before, you know, in years, so. It wasn't nothing to do with the road or the drain, he's, we, we went and tried to see if there was something we could do to some way, maybe help some, but I don't know.
Well, we upsized and put.
Well, I know, and it wasn't, you know, it was something that was that way for years and years, had been that way, so. Hopefully that helped him, I don't know, but if we get, if he happens to get a rain like he happened to that, that one night, it'll probably happen again. I mean, unfortunately, it's just one of them things, so.
And I have not received notification on, forget the project name, on Clayton Road, on Soil and Water.
All the Soil and Water.
Yeah, they have not sent yet the certified letter when the next meeting will be.
Which, that'll probably go out a while, knowing how them projects work.
Okay.
I used to, I've worked with them, they're laws, they take a while, so. Yep.
Okay, I think that's all I have.
I got you, yeah. Okay, zoning.
There's been eight trash billing suspensions due to the tornado. And I'm working on the delinquent trash letters for any property owner that owes a hundred and four dollars or more, excuse me, or more. The letters will go out this week. The due date will be August twenty-sixth. If it's not paid on or before August twenty-sixth, the amount owed plus any additional penalties and fees will be sent to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office for twenty-twenty tax assessment. Total numbers of letters as of tonight is a hundred and twenty-eight. Since the July meeting, I've issued a pool permit for one-five-two-four-three Providence Pike. I issued a pole barn permit for fifty-five forty-one Crawford Tom's Run, that was destroyed in the tornado. And I issued a porch permit for fifty-seven seventy-six Crawford Tom's Run. I need a resolution to assess property taxes at one-five-eight-zero-zero Little Richmond Road and one-sixty-one Johnsville Brookville Road for mowing. I thought I brought that with me, but I know the Little Richmond amount is one thousand two hundred and two dollars and forty cents. And Johnsville Brookville.
Hey.
I forget how much.
Yeah, I, I, you had said, but I don't recall either, but I so moved that we assess those properties.
Sure.
Sim?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
And the BGA meeting held on July eleventh was for two different property lot splits and those were both approved. And I gave copies of the approvals to trustee Sim. And the township offices will be closed August fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. That's all I have.
Okay, um, police department. Oh, well, excuse me, what, do we have any others mowing issues? I was gonna ask if there was any others that, I know you had a couple that got like mowed.
Yeah.
And I, and I just wondered.
Yeah, there, there's one more, I'm waiting on the road crew to mow one, but that's it.
I didn't, I knew some, some said something about repairing a mower or something, I knew they happened and I just wondered where we were.
Yeah, those happened.
Okay, okay, very good. Why can't you?
I need one.
Okay, police department.
Just a handout from the chief of trustees regarding a potential police cruiser for replacement.
I'll need one as well.
I'll make a couple copies here.
I'm sorry, I don't know what, I thought there was two here, that's why. Oh, it is.
That's all right.
I think our table is gonna get used.
You doing a motion to table with that again?
Yeah, motion to table just to get a chance for investigation.
Second. Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes. Okay, um.
That's it.
I'm sorry.
That's it.
Pretty easy. Visitors have anything else?
David?
You answered.
Thank you.
Okay. Jason?
Yeah, I just had one question. I wasn't here for July and I know there was a big kerfuffle that happened. And DVD hasn't been released, so I was wondering if there's anything that can be said about the meeting on July night? The status of where things are?
I have the redacted copies. The DVD was actually pulled by me. I did a criminal investigation, so under, I actually have some packets that people want on the Public Records Act, some confidential law enforcement issues. Those are not public record until we meet certain criteria in the investigation.
Understand.
So we had to have the DVDs themselves sent out to be redacted because there was a personal address that was blurted during the meeting. Since it's been redacted, now the copies are prepared and they're ready, that's why I brought them tonight, 'cause I wasn't sure who else was gonna be here. I know a couple people had asked for them, so I made some copies just to make sure they were available.
I was just asking in general where everything was, because like I said, I wasn't here, so I didn't get a chance to.
I get it. I, I know it kinda sucks because public records laws are, they're a little convoluted in their wording. If you read the Ohioirvice Code proper, then you've go to the, this is from the Ohio Attorney General's public records release. This is put out, I think, February twenty nineteen by Dave Yost, the new agent. There's some things that go through here, that's why I printed them out. There are a lot of exceptions that sometimes we have to go through. I know it's very frustrating for the public at large. I'm not a big person trying to hold and cove at things, but sometimes I'm compelled by this to do so. Now we're at the point where at least the video can be released. My report proper is in the hands of the prosecutor. Once it's returned to me and things have been blessed by the prosecutor, this report will also be ready for public release as well.
Understand.
Like I say, as soon as I.
Yeah, I wasn't asking about the DVDs themselves, I was just asking in general for a summary of.
There was, there was a
The meeting.
A shenanigans, if you will, that, Lawson Waymeyer did an administrative review on it. Since I was not here that night, they assigned me, do the criminal part, so we're just kinda plugging through it.
Appreciate that.
And then especially with what happened down the Oregon District, how things have been kind of pushed a little farther back, so I.
No, I understand, I, I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to push punches.
No, 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 anything else, I'm just asking.
During the meeting, they're really letting.
No, it was after the meeting. And what it will all done is I know it sucks for the public because you want answers, and I get that. I honestly get that. I'm the same way. I get paid to be nosy.
Right.
So I understand people wanting us going on, unfortunately, sometimes we can't. But we're at the point now where as soon as prosecutor gets back with me, I will certainly let the people who are requesting it know that way they can get everything they need.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Okay, um. Mr. Ford?
Hi, I, I normally don't show up, but it's a good thing because I, I wanna thank everybody for the good job that you've been doing and you've been corresponding with Ron because I live on the Preble County Highway, which is Little Richmond Road, okay, as everybody knows. And they've been speeding down the road, I mean, 'cause if they wanna avoid detection, they stay off at thirty-five and come on, on ours. So, and I have talked to Ron and Ron has been helping me out with talking to the police department about parking in one of our garages areas, 'cause that way you're right in the middle and when, when they're zooming, you, you can nail them right in there. And they've also been dumping underneath the bridge right there by the olive at church. I, I'm finding furniture under there now. And Ron, I've came to Ron about it.
I saw they pulled out some today.
Huh?
I saw they pulled out some today.
Yeah, yeah, furniture. It's, it's major furniture.
Do you know if anybody around there has cameras?
Pardon?
Do you know if anybody around there has surveillance cameras?
I, I don't think so.
That wouldn't be in a place. But I talked to the county about that. And I told them, you know, it's, it's on your road, you gotta come out here and be subtle about it, because it was actually back at the creek, there was a lot of furniture junk in there. And they said they'd be out here this week. I called, told them last Friday and they sure enough were here to take care of it. Did they get it all removed?
I haven't taken my nightly walk, and I'm not gonna get too, 'cause I, I've gotta go, go to work after this, but I, I wanna thank the township for doing the great job that you're doing and the police department. Your cars are doing great because I'll admit, I was going a little fast, I noticed. Oh, they changed the color. Wait a minute. Yeah, so, thank you for doing what you're doing and, and I must go, go to work, just keep up the good work.
How about get some trail cams for that, in those areas like that?
Well, hopefully it's not gonna happen.
Those could be hidden, though.
Okay, and Ms. Barnes?
I too wanna come, I've never been to the, any of these meetings until June and July. And I had called in to poor Kate, who I was very upset with, several times. It was just an excuse to let your grass grow. Gladly, one morning I heard that this mower was going, and I thought I was gonna snap a belt, 'cause he's mowing it with a regular riding mower, which I couldn't believe, but he did get it down after four times, he went over it four times, and these people moved in in oh-six, and this is the best this yard's looked since they've lived there. So I wanna thank Ron and everybody, 'cause like I said, I was losing my patience with poor Kate, but when Ron got involved, it happened, and I wanna thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other visitors? Have any comments, questions? I'll make a motion re-adjourn.
I second.
I guess what you say, I don't, I don't.
Price?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Sim?
Yes.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From my understanding, you guys are going off to, because we really live in that place.
I wanna make sure Ron gets the.